Didn't use the whole time. Now the fun part, questions. Who's got a question for our city councilman? Could we come up to the mics, or?
Be chairman of the, they had long they lived here in Irving, no, but I got them beat on that. I was born and raised here. But anyway, y'all talking about redoing Irving, the city up here in the main. Why don't you do, restore some of the old buildings? The people can have something to see when they come and visit us. There's, I bet you there's not ten, no, there ain't that many old buildings left. Y'all hadn't tore up, or something. When the theater building is still there, them two is still there. And one of them, do y'all know the names of any of them, of the theaters? Do you? What?
Are you talking about the theater that's on Main Street?
Yes.
I do not remember the name, but my parents went there many times.
Oh, I did too.
The Meeger family built several theaters throughout Irving. The Chateau, the Bueno Vista, and the old Irving Theater down across from Griff's.
No, that, the, uh, I mean...
I know, but that's what was there when I was a teenager.
One of them was the Rio. I remember that because they had western shows. And on the other side of them, they had shows, and they had cartoons and all this. And where the shoe shop is, okay. Okay, okay. But anyway, I'd love to see some restoring. Instead of taking up land and tearing the old storied buildings down, put some, redo them. And you'd be surprised, Irving, well, city of Irving will have more people. Have more money coming in, visitors. Okay, restore it, not tear them down.
I wanted to reply briefly to your statement. I served for five years on the City of Irving Museum Advisory Board. And as that, of that five years, I was chairman for three years. I have fought for that entire time to save the old firehouse downtown on Second Street.
On, yeah, I think he should be.
There have been many studies on that building, and right now, it is basically condemned. The mortar that's holding the bricks together has insufficient lime in it to be able to do the job, and the exterior walls are the support of the building. I proposed, when we had a feasibility study, and the feasibility study is still going on for the museum, that we consider that as one of the sites and save the building.
Yes.
The team that came in said that in order to be able to do that, that the building would have to be torn apart brick by brick and reassembled with the appropriate mortar to hold it together correctly. They estimate a little over $1 million in cost to be able to do that. Personally, I'm in favor of it.
Me too.
It was, it was the first city hall that Irving had. It was the first police building that City of Irving had, and the original cell is still there. And it was the first fire department that the City of Irving had. I believe that it is important to save our heritage.
I do too. And one of them old, uh, fire trucks, well, redo it, stick it up there. But we do, need to redo it.
I wanna, I wanna add also to that. I love history. And before, before anything, I studied the city. And this, this city has a marvelous history. And with the history involved in it, my, my thoughts have been similar in thought of Don. Being a history buff, I would like to see, I wanted to see, to keep some of these old buildings intact. There's money we could have. They think, they say we could save some money by doing other projects and bring some money into the south part of Irving. Those ones ways to work out. But I would like to see our city incorporate what the past was, what the few, what the present is, and what the future can be. I see, like Irving, like the senior center. I'd like to see that big lot in the back by the side also to have a senior living center as well. With a nice pretty park, with a gazebo, with some old fashioned lights. Where the seniors can walk to the senior center, be able to walk at night in the park, enjoy some music. And this is incorporating some of what is then, now, and for the future. There's a lot of things that we can do to this city. I have so many ideas with this thing that, uh, it's endless. But I believe so. I believe that this city, especially downtown area, we can keep a lot of those things intact, especially right there on Main, between Irving Boulevard and Second. Sure can.
I know exactly what you're talking about. This is the fun place to grow up. It was a fun place to run the streets. Where I went to elementary school is where the Senior Citizen Center is now. That's full circle for me, folks. Okay? Yeah, that's full circle for me, okay? Uh, it brings things into a different, uh, concept for me. There's a lot to do in downtown Irving. I believe it's a place that's worth saving. I can remember, uh, the Five and Dime Stores that were down there. One of them, the toy section was in the back left, and the other in the toy section was in the front right. Okay, that's the memories I have. I knew, I knew exactly where the toys were when we went in there. Uh, I can remember the grocery stores. I can remember when the, the post office was at the corner of Main and Second. Many people don't remember that. I remember that. Uh, the first library was that building in Heritage Park. I don't know if married people remember that. That was the first library, that small building in Heritage Park over there. It's a place that's, that has some really great history and some really great flavor to it. And I would really like to see us revive that. It's gonna mean fixing some buildings up. A lot of them have deteriorated because they haven't been in use. But I think we can encourage developers to come in and redo those buildings. Look at what happened to Big State Drug. Okay, people invested in that. And it's, and it's a nice cafe, they've, they fixed it up. There's another building on the downtown strip that's being redone. If I'm not mistaken, it's an Italian cafe going in there, if I'm not mistaken. But it's being fixed up. There's things that we need to do downtown. We need to make it better, we need to make it a place that people think's fun to come to, that people want to come to. And we need a post office. Thanks.
Here's another question.
I just have some compliments for y'all. I've lived here 30 years. I moved down here during the boom. Remember the boom, '85, '84, along in there? And I wanted to buy a house, I always had a house. Well, guess what, I only had one to choose from. But I only needed one. And it was a VA assumption, yay team. We've come, I've seen a lot of rough times come and go in this town with regard to council, with regard to our school system. And both have worked hard. We've worked hard to try to get the right people in there. And we have. And we've seen great improvement. I want to personally thank Stephen Jones, who's worked tirelessly to bring our school district up. I, I think, you know, with a watchful eye, we can keep that going. I think the incumbents on council are very knowledgeable people. They work very, very hard. And these are not the people we need to replace right now. Maybe next election. Thank you.
I would like to make a comment on the DOT system and the wonderful service that we are doing at DFW Airport. The only comment I have is Saturday and Sunday, DOT bus is stopped at 7:30. But train runs up to 3 o'clock in the morning. And also, the notice that I hear, I noticed something, that sometime bus comes before the train, and the people are stranded. About 9:30 in the evening, there's nothing, no place to go. How are you gonna address that issue when you are trying to run a train to 3 AM to DFW? And we have a four major stations in Irving, but people get off. But how can they go home if there's no bus available? Because bus are interconnecting to a city. I know this is a six months old, uh, system, but we want to think about it, to make it cohesive. When the train comes, bus there. Bus wouldn't be there before the train. Thank you.
Hello, Lauren Byers, I'm a citizen here in Irving. And I'm wondering, from the persons that have talked about, uh, South Irving, about reconstructing South Irving. Don, I applaud you for, for what you said about the old city hall. That's something I've been advocating for a long time as well. But how are we going to do that? Downtown, most of those buildings are owned by private individuals. How are we going to circumvent private ownership to be able to reconstruct that and have it historically honest? And as far as that goes, Irving Boulevard, Second Street, uh, from point to point, to where they split, how are we going to be able to get those properties updated when that's all private, almost all private ownership? Uh, so I'd like to hear the responses of the people that represent South Irving.
Lauren, the question that you ask is really a good question, and it is a complex question. Where do the rights of individuals bump up against the rights of the city? And what should be the outcome of that? I have two quotes from, both, both of these come from friends. Calvin Tillman was the mayor of Dish, Texas until recently. And he has a saying. He says, "United, we bargain; divided, we beg." "United, we bargain; divided, we beg." From that, I started thinking outside of the box. Typically, we look to our government to handle things like that. To me, well, I have heard for years that this restaurant, this retail business will not come to South Irving because of the demographics. I believe it's time that we, the people who make up those demographics, form a group and present our wants and our needs through a committee to the CEOs of the businesses that we would like to see come into Irving. And through that, we can get together 14, 1500 people or more in that organization, send forward two or three people to talk to the CEO and say, "We want your business to come here, and we will support it." That is the primary concern that people have about moving into the South Irving area is whether their business will last for the first two years. If we, the people, tell them that this is what we want, we can do this. As far as the private ownership of those buildings, actually, the city owns several of them. And through that, and through incentives to have the owners to improve their own properties with incentives from the city, we can do a lot about rejuvenating the downtown area. And with the help of the people of South Irving, we can get the businesses in here that we want. Thank you.
I'm not in disagreement with Don at all. I think the people of South Irving have to sell South Irving. We have to let people know that we believe in what's down here, and that we love it down here, and that we would like to see growth down here. As a city councilman, I will go to those CEOs. I will go to those property owners. I will go to people who start businesses. And I will sell South Irving to those people. I think it's great to have a committee, but you need to have a councilman that's committed to doing that also. That's what I want to do. That's what I want to sell, is South Irving to people who can bring businesses down here. Thanks.
Like I mentioned earlier, I'm a small businessman. And business is what, uh, makes this community go. Because money is what makes this community go. One of my platforms is to have monthly community district meetings. Because information, education, and involvement is what it takes to make a city grow and move. Being a small business owner, I can incorporate, or I can unite, bring the small business people that are in that corridor of Irving Boulevard, Second Street. Any of these. Because I'm a person that's personal person. I'm a hand-to-hand person. I'm a person that's proactive. I don't need anybody that's gonna tell me, say, "Well, uh, let's put this into effect." No, sir, no, ma'am, I'm gonna go to you and we're gonna talk about it. What can we do together? What do you need? What do you think we should do? That's what we need to do. As a small business owner, I have those experiences. I have established programs even with our sister cities in Mexico, Nuevo León, Guanajuato. I've had audiences with then-Governor Fox, who later became President of Mexico. I know and I have connections within the community, with the business community from Malpasso to Brownsville to Ed Valle, to San Antonio, to Austin, and even to Houston. I have those experiences. I have those knowledges. I feel that by inviting people, selling the downtown area, we can make it grow. We can develop that downtown heritage district. A place that we can all be proud of, and a place that we can see what the past was, what the present is, and what the future can do. It can happen. It can happen. Thank you.
I don't have any answers, I, I just have a perspective. Uh, this discussion's been going on now at least 20 years. But in 1968, when I came to Irving with little more than an old car and a law degree, I, I took an office in the then-Texas Commerce Bank. It used to be the old Irving Bank. And that building, if you remember, Phil certainly does, was built in, I think, 1966. At the time, John Randenberg and Bob Pittman and Phil Reed, who were the principal owners of the bank, thought that downtown Irving, the present Main Street and Irving Boulevard, would be the business district, the business center of Irving. And they were competing, at that time, with Southwest Bank up at Plymouth Park. What they didn't know in 1966, when they built that building, number one, that the airport would come in in 1972, or whenever it was, and Ben Carpenter would follow along, beginning in 1973. And when that happened, as you know, all the air got sucked out of South Irving and, and went north. Truthfully, uh, downtown as we know it today isn't a lot different than I do it in 1968. You know, we're comparing it to something else. Obviously, we don't have the activity that we did in 1968. I am a free market person. I believe economic decisions are made by the market. I can't give you any advice, because I'm just a lawyer. But my experience is economic decisions are made by the market. Government can help. Government can facilitate development. They can provide infrastructure, and that's what we've done, uh, in numerous places in Irving to facilitate development. We cannot make a market, and, and the one thing I do know, proof of that is, we're $57 million in the hole. We taxpayers are gonna be out $57 million because of the McDougal fiasco. That's what we spent, and that's what we're gonna spend when we get through paying off the $29 million we're paying back. Why are we in this mess with McDougal? Because bureaucrats at city hall thought they know, knew more how to make development decisions than American businessmen. And they had a plan, obviously, that didn't work. I'm for doing everything we as a city can do to help people be successful in downtown Irving. Unlike, you know, perhaps other members of the city council, I've consistently, over the years, opposed excessive city subsidies for private development. That's a philosophical call on my part. I'm willing to help. There's a limit to how much of your tax money I'm willing to give to some private developer. Don't know what the future is going to hold, because I don't... Someone higher than me knows the answers to that, but, but I think our role is to be of assistance.
Thank you all. I think everybody here recognizes that HB 562 generated a great deal of controversy in the city the past several days. And so this question's really gonna be directed more to the incumbents, but anybody who wishes to weigh in certainly is welcome. I wanted to read you a quote. I think the city council received a, a letter that said, among other things, the following. "If anyone read the bill, they would have to be looking for trouble to see it as anything other than the affirmation of the laws that have made this country a magnet for immigrants around the world." In essence, they were saying the HB 562 really didn't change law at all. It was a codification of common law. So with that in mind, my question to the incumbents is, if that's the case, then why did the city council feel it imperative to approve a resolution on a House bill that really didn't change anything? So anybody would like to respond to that?
Well, let me just say that. That, what you just said was my understanding. Uh, and that's the explanation I understood the state representative gave, and that was my reading of the language. And that explains, you know, why I voted the way I did. Because I was of the opinion, number one, it had to do with the change in divorce law. And Irving City Council, or any city council, needs to let the legislature determine what the divorce laws are of the state of Texas, and, you know, you know, not us. My view is, and that it didn't... It didn't affect either side of the question. The language only reaffirmed what the law is. Anyway, the law is, if, if a court order is in conflict with the laws of the state of Texas or the Constitution, it's invalid. I don't think that... And they're gonna have a discussion Thursday, I understand, and we'll see, you know, what the discussion is.
Somebody else may wanna...
I keep my comments brief, because I think this issue was probably needlessly made divisive. What was in front of us that hasn't been talked about is support for a House bill that basically said, "To the extent a foreign law is applied in a contract or attempted to be applied in a court, if it would violate the state of Texas Constitution or the US Constitution, that contract provision or, or ruling would be void." And in, in my book, that's what we were voting on. I will stand with the US Constitution, the Texas Constitution, every time it's presented to me.
Thank you, Troy. Yes, sir, I heartily concur with Brad.
As do I.
And, uh, it's important. It's important that we honor the Constitution of the United States and follow the rules, because there are people that are being abused, that are citizens of Texas, citizens of the United States. And we must make sure that all those laws that we have and hold dear to are adhered to. Thank you.
I also would like to address your question for just a second. I was present at the council meeting on Thursday and spoke. As a candidate, I was the only candidate other than Joe Putnam, who was on the dais and had an opportunity to vote. When I spoke, I mentioned my reading of the House bill and what I thought that it said. And that was that it was a reaffirmation of our Constitution of the United States and a reaffirmation of the Texas Constitution. When I attended work session last week, I heard discussion that all of this already exists in law. Why do we need to pass another law to reaffirm other laws? I took it from that, that the individual speaking that thought that it was redundant. I asked the council a question Thursday. When has it been bad to be redundant in supporting our Constitution? At the beginning of every council session, we pledge allegiance to the flag, as we did here tonight. Is it redundant to do it every time? Is that bad? I don't think so. I pledge my allegiance to this country daily. I also served in the United States Army, where I was asked to swear an oath that I would protect the US Constitution, defend it, and protect the United States of America against all enemies, both domestic and foreign. And if and when this body elects me to be on the city council, I will be asked to swear that again, just as every incumbent has done, to swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Texas. We had a 5-4 vote in favor of supporting that Constitution. We had four votes against supporting the Constitution by the fact that they voted against, uh, the resolution to support the House bill. I, I don't go along with anything that denies support of our Constitution. Thank you.
Pardon me, but I, I wanted to apologize to all of you. Our council was extremely rude. That was the worst meeting this city council has ever had. The disrespect that was shown was just absolutely ridiculous. We should not conduct ourselves in a manner that was conducted. And our mayor was absolutely correct when she tried to call it to order. But certain people, and, and the offensiveness that was given to Matt Rinaldi, who came down there on his own free will, was unbelievably rude. And I apologize to all of you, because I'm a part of that team.
You know, I do, I do favor, because I've also been in the military, and I did swear to uphold the Constitution and fight for my country. After, I went to the, I went to the Wednesday meeting as well, to the working, work session meeting. And after we went into, uh, they went into executive session, I'm, I kinda bumped into Brad out there, and I said, "You know, that's a good thing y'all did." I says, "I go for that." And that's what I stand for. I go for that too. I'm in favor for that. It's really, it's really a protection. Right, it's a protection. But at the same time, it's, it's just a, it's the reassurance. It's a reassurance to protect all of us. Because we know what's going on. We know what's going across the world. We hear it every day. Somebody's coming here or wants to harm us or whatever. We have to be prepared ourselves. So to me, that was just a preparation of protecting ourselves. Protection of protecting our rights. So I'm for it, and I will continue. I will continue to take a note, to swear, to uphold the laws of this country and the Constitution. And to fight for it. Thank you.
I'd like to say something on this topic as well. I've been licensed to practice law in this state for about 28 years this November.
I've been licensed to practice law in this state for about 28 years this November, and I learned early on, the Constitution, U.S. Constitution, the Supreme Court of this land, it is the supreme law of the land. Next under that, there's other 50 states, and they have their own constitutions that they can enact laws and operate under, so long as it's not conflict with the U.S. Constitution. Now, some of these guys up here practice law for a living, and I don't anymore, but I've never seen a court that has said, you know what, in this case, we're going to say the Texas Constitution isn't valid, or that the United States Constitution isn't valid. So I understand here and tell you that I believe firmly that that is the law, and I defend it to the death. But do I think this was something the city ought to be involved in on this last go-around? My answer to that is no, I don't. And the reason I think no, I don't, is because really, if there's some, because these things, it has very tiny consequence. If that bill does get passed by the legislature, I don't think it's going to be a case where then the next day, every judge in the state's going to wake up and say, oh, I know what to do now, because they've been doing this, and the law gets applied routinely, daily in the courts in our state, and that's what I have faith in. And more importantly, there are so many important issues that we have going on in this city. If we are really trying to get people engaged and to come out and put on T-shirts and show up for an event to try to do something, I think we ought to be trying to do things that have consequence to them, serious consequence, not just tiny consequence.
You're probably going to hear a little different slant on this from me. I totally support that House bill. That's from my personal view, okay? If I was an elected representative, I would want to make sure that the voters were canvassed or that there was a voter referendum before I voted to pass a resolution to support that. I would be elected to represent the constituents in a district. There may be times that my personal opinion has to be set aside, and unless that takes place where I know how my constituents feel, I would, I would not support a resolution to that effect. I would support that House bill as an individual, and I will call my representative, I will contact my representative, and let them know that I support that. But I would make sure that I was speaking for my constituents before I would pass a resolution to that effect.
Well, okay, I'm going to weigh in on that because, do you know how many court cases are tried?
We need to get to a question. We're running out, we got about 15 minutes left.
Okay.
So we need to get to another subject.
Okay. There's only less than 200 court cases down there in the county. Most of it's handled jury through mediation, and that was a way of mediation. So there's little consequences, he says. But I have to say, you know, that the City Council voted and spent $40 million in Los Colinas, and we got a stack of worthless paper drawings, and yes, 40 million or whatever number might have got spent in South Irving, and we have some land. So, you know, which is the biggest boondoggle? And then they turned around and spent another probably 100 million, again, in Los Colinas. So I think it's about time Irving gets something than a renovated 10 building, you know, and it seems like they're doing more extensive. They were going to put asphalt over the parking lot down there and think people were going to come down there and drink beer, and, you know. Now we're up to, I think, like 1.3 or 4 million. I'd like to see that area where the Chisholm Smith and behind the Long John Silver's turn into a big food café place where you have about five restaurants, and, you know, I mean, with a few million, I could get four restaurants built. I don't need 40 million or 100 million. And we need to start thinking about what's going to serve the future, and to spend a million dollars on some little ratty building that is down there that's not going to serve and not going to bring more people is completely another boondoggle, you know? Like they say, if you like it, take a picture, you know? But let's get something productive, okay? But anyway, I was standing down there when a chunk of that building fell off, and it could have killed somebody. So it is condemned, it needs to be removed. If you want to use the bricks to build something useful, go ahead, but we don't need a jail cell down there on Second Street now, okay? So let's, you know, we, this city spends so much money on just plain old... Okay. Okay, so...
You did good, Bill.
But I do want to say...
Oh, you're done, you're done.
I'm Courtney Wilson. I am in my 30s. I'm single. I am a rarity in South Irving as far as people living here that want to be able to continue to bring people in, and all of my single friends live in Dallas. I have to drive 30, 45 minutes to hang out with them, to go to somewhere like Bishop Arts District, or go somewhere like Uptown, or somewhere that we can go to movie theaters that also have nice dining places by them. I have seen that there is some renovation happening here, and the thing is, is that how are you going to promote this information to people? As a person that doesn't sit down and watch the 5 o'clock news, or doesn't spend a lot of time reading a newspaper, like how are you going to be giving this information to individuals so that they can know when there's something that's happening for the Fourth of July, or they know that there's something happening for Main Street? Where's, where's these people that are in Dallas finding out about what's cool in Irving happening? So what, what are y'all going to do about that?
I don't really, I did just didn't get too much of it, but you were, what I understood that you sometimes go to Dallas and visit over there and enjoy...
All the time.
Right? Okay. And then you talked about there, right here in downtown Heritage. You know, my vision is this. I am thinking about bringing a restaurant. I'd like to see with that, and I'll come back, with that restaurant, and then I think you mentioned, where's the lady over there? Right there where the old Emco station was at, that empty lot right there. I'm thinking about having Delaware, Delaware Creek become a recreational area where people can canoe in there, they can rowboat their girlfriend, their husbands, sing along, and those trails that we have on the right side that leads all the way down to Center Park, develop that area where we can have little small restaurants in there with some lights and everything else. There's some, there's some wooded area back in the back that's sunk like that. I'd say let's go ahead and develop that area, too, and use that also as an attraction for people to come and be here and be able to spend their monies now here in the city of Irving. That's what we want to do. We want to bring people back into Irving so that our economy can start moving on up. And we can have, well, they're right behind the police department, there's a lot of land, a lot of land. I'm looking at a store where they will sell or rent canoes, boats. We can have a little canoe ride all the way down to. If you want to, they're going to develop sooner or later, a big old, all the way to Mount Creek Lake. So, you know, there's a lot of development, there's a lot of things that we can think about on that, but that's what I can see about your, I think that's what more or less you were thinking about. I'm not too sure.
I think that your answer, an excellent question, and I think part of the answer has got to be, you got to adapt to what young people do and how they get information. Text, for example, right? One of my kids, you call him, he's probably not answering the phone. You text him, he texts right back. Social media. People rely, we still as a city don't rely on a lot of high technology to try to get information out to young people in the community, and I think it's a particular challenge to just in general try to get younger folks involved in the community. Last night, League of Women Voters, stunning statistic to me that was thrown out, was out of eligible voters who are 30 and under, 60% of them are not registered to vote, right? That's not who, not the registered ones that don't turn out. 60% are not registered to vote. And frankly, I think probably this point was brought up, that neither of the two main political parties, they're really not interested in signing up new voters unless they know how they're going to vote. So if they get somebody who says, yes, I'm going to vote Republican, let me sign you up, or yes, I'm going to vote Democrat, let me sign you up, but just to try to get folks to, hey, we want to put out an effort to sign, they're not interested in that. So the trick is to try to figure out the ways to get younger people engaged earlier in the community, probably things like recreation centers, helping that, but then using technology to talk to young people in the mechanisms that they like, not just what we like.
Joe just asked me to tell you that you're good. This, this young lady is my daughter. I, I wanted to tell you that I have done what Phil says that he wants to do, to get out and talk to the people and find out what it is that they want. About three to four weeks ago, I asked my daughter to have her friends that she's talking about that live in extreme North Irving or in Dallas that say they do not want to come to the area of South Irving because there's nothing to do, to contact me. And I asked them specifically, what is missing here, and what would it take to make it something that you would want to do? Overwhelmingly, I was told it doesn't look good. It doesn't look like I want it to look in order for me to be there. There are several things going on in the city right now that are good. The comprehensive planning workshops. Has anyone been to one of those? I have. And what was amazing to me when I attended the comprehensive workshop was that I was sitting at a table that was approximately 50% residents of North Irving and 50% residents of South Irving, and yet everybody said the same thing. We've got to redevelop South Irving. It is not a South Irving issue to have South Irving redeveloped. Everyone in Irving knows that a thriving, healthy, vibrant South Irving is good for all of Irving. And we need to consider the generation that's coming up. I have three adult children. Two of them do not live in Irving. I used to say that is a real mandate to me when I am on council, to do something about it, to get it to where my children are eager to live in Irving, where my entire heritage is. And I thank you, Courtney, for the question.
I'd like to hear from the three incumbents, what is your number one priority going forward for the city of Irving? The three, I'd like the three incumbents. They're sitting in the seats now, and, and I think they have the insight, so that's, that's what I personally want to hear from the three incumbents, what your number one priority is going forward for the city.
Well, my number one priority for District Four in South Irving, as I mentioned earlier, is an ambulance at Fire Station Number One and a recreation center for Southwest Irving. This part of Irving does not have a rec center. We had one at Lamar, and the previous administration closed it down. Probably this is the only part of Irving that really doesn't have a, a good recreation center. In Southwest Irving, there are 25,000 residents and 8,000 children, 18 years are under, so I think we can certainly make the case that that's a need that needs to be addressed.
Just one, huh? Well, my, my number one priority is to serve the residents of Irving with what they want, but as far as a pressing project, I'll go back to the fire service. It's rated as our highest service by our citizens, but we've got catch-up to do. Phil was right, we need to build probably two more stations, maybe relocate another. We were behind on apparatus, and we've been catching up. And what Tom mentioned is, our goal is to get to PPC one, and that's very important because it can actually, in some cases, lower insurance rates, but it also makes the city safer. And we owe that to the residents, and we owe that to our firefighters.
Yes, ma'am. I'll go right back to what I said. The number one obligation we have to you is to make sure that you've got a safe city. Everything else has got to be second nature to that, and the fire department is our major concern with obsolete equipment, and it needs to get the best PPC rating we can have in the state for the safety of all of our citizens, as well as our firemen that put their life on the line every day they go out. Thank you.
Okay, I'll make this short. I think your model for the downtown Heritage District is just flat wrong. People won't come to South Irving because they think it's scary. Well, there's an area in Dallas that is surrounded by scary neighborhoods, and it's absolutely hopping, and that's Bishop Arts. Bishop Arts needs to be your model. You're not going to get people there by sticking in a Chili's. You're not going to get people there by building fake brick buildings. Look at Bishop Arts, figure out how to replicate what they did.
Hi, my name is Kelly. I'm one of those freaky people that absolutely agreed with our City Council and our mayor when they voted on the resolution last Thursday. It may be redundant to a few of you, but to us, it means a great deal. So we've gotten, I know where Tom and Brad are, I know where Dawn is, I know where Joe is. I got an okay, I mean, kind of an iffy, I know that you'd vote for the bill, but not for the resolution. Is that right, David? Okay. And you would vote for the bill, but not for the resolution? Okay. We know where Joe is. Dawn, where, where are you on this? I have folks asking me, so I want to give them an answer. That's really not any of your concern. You're, you're answering the question for me.
As I mentioned before, I've served in the Army and the Army Reserve for 22 years all throughout this world. I've been to 25 countries, I believe, probably 15 or so of them in the service of this country. I have taken an oath to defend the United States Constitution and the Texas Constitution multiple times. I can tell you that the Constitution will be protected on my watch. Period, end of sentence. I found the resolution appalling. And I'll tell you why I found the resolution appalling. It did nothing. All of the lawyers that are sitting here in front of you, they're not all lawyers, but there's several of them that are, and they all know that the Constitution of the United States is protected by the Supreme Court of the United States. The Constitution of the state of Texas is protected by the Supreme Court of Texas, and those Supreme Courts will protect the Constitution. They don't need a resolution from this city. They don't need a resolution from the State House to do that. It was duplicative, it was redundant, and it was offensive to a large portion of our population. A target has been painted on the back of Irving, Texas because of that resolution needlessly. It did nothing to promote the future of this city. We need to be concerned about the future of the city and not political agendas.
This is for Joe, specifically for you, Joe, Brad, and Tom, since you guys are sitting council members. This is about the Infinity Project and how bad it's turned out. I just wouldn't know what you have done since I made the request for traffic improvement on the Shady Grove Road. I advise you of the danger. We still have that danger. It's been two years now. We still don't have any safety devices for Shady Grove. So, with that said, our property values have been, sorry, Phil, you're not gonna get that ambulance because our property values have been depreciated by 7% because there's no traffic control. So, so with that said...
Let me just tell you what happened. And of course, as you know, we communicated, when the project was approved, they have a tra, had a traffic management plan. And as we found out, and I'd heard from you and some of your neighbors, it was inadequate. And I personally contacted the city manager's office and told him to start to, trying to solve the problem. I got, uh, city staff involved, city council members involved. At that time, we had a tra, a public safety committee and they got involved. And when the school came back for an amendment to add the auditorium or whatever it is, city staff required them to revise their traffic management plan. One of the things that the city has required them to do, that they didn't wanna do, was hire police officers to direct traffic. And they resisted that and we told them they had to do it and a number of improvements. Has everything been done that maybe needs to be done to, to solve all the issues? Maybe not. I go by there all the time because I live just around the corner from you. And I think there has been a tremendous improvement. My guess is, there's, if there's anything more that can be done, we're all willing to, to listen, but we devoted a lot of resources to the city.
It's been two years. You've been listening for two years and still haven't found a resolution.
Haven't heard from you. All you gotta do is call me on the phone if you have an issue. You know, I answer the phone.
I do. I go to city council meetings as well. Brad, you've been there, Tom, you've been there. I wanna hear from you guys, why we still don't have a resolution for South Irving.
Well, I can tell you, those two supported what city staff recommended and they supported the enhanced traffic management plan. And they supported everything the city manager's office and our transportation people have required, and they answer for themselves, but I know what they did because they supported everything city staff has attempted to do to alleviate the, the problem and require the, the school to manage their traffic to the best of their abilities.
This is Shady Grove of MacArthur I'm talking about.
I'm sorry? No. Infinity, MacArthur and Shady Grove. They may not even know where it is. Brad doesn't.
It's a nightmare.
But I'll tell you what I'll do tomorrow. Have you got some time tomorrow?
Yeah.
Let's meet tomorrow and let's go drive that area you're talking about. Then I'll get with Dan Vedrell and you and I'll have a meeting with him. And we'll bring this up and we'll get something done about it. How about that? Can you call me? Do you want my number?
Sure.
972. And anybody else can take it down, too. And we'll get together and we'll get your answer. Okay?
Thank you.
You know, this is what I'm talking about. This is a good example. I wanna be here. Tom doesn't need to come over here to this gentleman that lives out here in District Four to do his job. We have, he has a district councilman that should be taking care of business with his, with his resident, with his voter, with his taxpayer. This is what's happening without the city. There's a lot of people like that that call to City Hall and they're letting somebody else across, across the city to come and do the work that is, that somebody else is representing these people. If they're not representing these people, they're not representing it. There's gotta be something wrong. It ain't right. That's what I was talking about earlier. I'm here to serve. I'm here to serve. And this gentleman doesn't have to wait two years to come, somebody to come do some work at his house, nor you. You call me, I'm gonna be right there tomorrow, we're gonna talk about it, we're gonna see what we can do about it. And this is what this whole scenario, this is why we're here, and this is why I'm here trying to get your vote. Because we all know that sometimes things don't work out the way they supposed to do. And they have not. We got, what, 17, 20 years still? Some, something one of these days is gonna happen here in the South Irving, somebody's gonna finally decide that, oh, we'll, we'll build, build something, but why do we have to wait 20 years? We're taxpayers. You're taxpayers, we work for you. We're responsible for what you want in this city. We work for those taxpayers' money. We're responsible for you. And that's what I look for. I look for your money, your taxpayers' money. That's what is involved in here. And I'm sorry to say that I have to listen to not only him like this, but there's other people in the district that don't seem that their voices have been heard, that they can come to the city and talk to their council people, to their representatives, and get some work done. I will be that person. I can do that. I'm the can-do candidate here and I'm the can-do city councilman. Thank you.
I'll make it short. It's hard to follow that, but I agree with a lot of what Joe said, but if the traffic plan's not working, I've, I've not heard that, so let's get back to work on it.
And thank you very much.
One more comment.
We're, we're way, we're way past the time.
Like I said, 1.4 million lost in valuation in South Irving. That's just pecan grove. That's $30,000 of tax revenue that's been lost by the city because of the way the incumbents voted.
Well, we thank you all for coming tonight. It's been, I think, very successful. Now, we just have a couple of hard decisions to make of which one, which two are we gonna vote for? Well, we are, we're only, we don't get to vote for three. Unless you can find a way we can get some names added to the ballot. Well, thank you all very much. We, we got time, you can still meet and talk with the candidates out in the hall. The church has asked us to be out here, close the doors by 9:00. So we got a few more minutes outside. 9:30, we have to be completely gone. And it's seven minutes after.